It is now seven o'clock and we are ready to begin our meeting. Would everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening, everyone. It's so good to see everyone. Thank you for coming out today. And we're going to start off with our inspirational moment from Julie French.
Good evening, everyone. There we go. November is the traditional month for us to be thankful for what we have. And I was searching around for videos, so I'm going to let Kim go ahead and start the video for us first.
Everybody gets a heart, everybody gets a soul, everybody gets a mind to let them know that we can be smart, we can be kind, we can be living by giving and loving all the time. So on the days when it's feeling tough and it seems like you don't have enough, well, let's be thankful for our friends and family and grateful for the air that we breathe and appreciate everything that we have today. Let's be generous to anyone who has less than us. It's good to be compassionate ever since the day you were born. Yeah, we've got a lot to be thankful for. Yeah, we've got a lot to be thankful for. Everybody gets the land and everybody gets a seed. So everybody lend a hand to those in need. Cause we can be nice, we can be nice, we can all share, and we can keep growing together. It's better when everyone cares. So on the days when it's feeling tough and it seems like you don't have enough, well, let's be thankful for our friends and family and grateful for the air that we breathe and appreciate everything that we have today. Let's be generous to anyone who has less than us. It's good to be compassionate ever since the day you were born. Yeah, you've got a lot to be thankful for. Yeah, we've got a lot to be thankful for. So what are you thankful for?
I'm thankful for my family.
I am thankful for my neighbor.
I'm thankful for my dog.
I am thankful for the food I have seen.
I'm thankful for my heart.
I am thankful for my grandma and grandpa.
I'm thankful for my teacher.
I am thankful for my house.
We're thankful for the earth.
So on the days when it's feeling tough and it seems like you don't have enough, well, let's be thankful for our friends and family and grateful for the air that we breathe and appreciate everything that we have today. Let's be generous to anyone who has less than us. It's good to be compassionate ever since the day you were born. Yeah, you've got a lot to be thankful for.
Thankful.
Yeah, you've got a lot to be thankful for.
Grateful.
Uh huh. We've got a lot to be thankful for.
Appreciate.
Yeah, we've got a lot to be thankful for. All right. We've got a lot to be thankful for.
Okay, so the other day I was on my Facebook, I do that often, and I look at the chat. There's a Warren Township chat and a Warren Township campfire. And I look at those because it's community stuff going on, things that are going on around us. And I saw that a gentleman had put on one of those two, I don't remember which, that he had gotten a job and was in a little bit of need for a pair of boots, a special pair of boots that worked with the job he was going into. They had to be special and they were a little bit more expensive. And so he was asking if anybody could help him with that or had used ones that he might be able to buy. And I realized that I'm really thankful for this community because there wasn't just one response. There were like a numerous number of responses that people offering pairs that they have and stuff that someone offered some that he'd only worn a couple, three times. And I just think we are so fortunate to be, everybody talks about Warren as a family. And I just think we are so fortunate to be on the East Side with people who care so much about each other. So when you go home to your families and you have your Thanksgiving holiday activities, just be thankful for where you're at because this is a great place to be. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Julie. That was very inspirational. Many times, so many things go on in our life and we forget to be thankful because we have to look around, but there are people that are less fortunate. On my way here, I felt so sorry for the homeless people that were out there asking for money on the street. And I was like, I am cold just getting in my car. So I can imagine how cold they were out there in the elements. So we have so much to be thankful for. And instead of complaining, we need to be grateful. Thank you again, Julie, to remind us to be thankful. At this time, we're going to turn it over to Dr. Hanson for our superintendent's report.
Good evening, board, community. I want to highlight just a few things. I know we have a long agenda this evening. I just shared with you the Indiana Urban Schools Association Complexity and Special Education Analysis. That's a mouthful. We met in October. This report was released. I invite you to look at it prior to our December 21st work session meeting. Dave Markov, the Executive Director of IUSA, will be presenting that to the board. If you remember, he came to the board a couple of years ago when they did the initial complexity report, which I would say had a significant impact in that legislative budget session. And we anticipate this one's going to have a positive impact for us as well. Just a reminder, the Indiana Urban Association is built of 35 schools across the state, those who serve in urban areas. I want to highlight several of board members. Dennis and Howard and Rachel and Julie have served on Rotary. We had two really great Rotary events over since last board meeting. There was a Roller Cave, thanks to Luke Boston and Roller Cave for hosting a fundraising event. They invited kids out to dress up and they had a contest. I did not get out and skate. I passed those days, but it was a lot of fun to see our families out there. And then a couple of weeks ago, Rotary, in partnership with Meyer and the district, gave out 76 pairs of shoes to our middle school students and Renaissance students. So it's always great to be involved in that. I want to highlight our progress and process checks. For those of you that remember the process checks back in the eight-step process days, we've continued to do these. And these are days that we spend in schools, sitting in front of teachers, hearing their feedback on what's going well in our district and where we can improve. And after visiting six schools, we got a lot of successes. And we have some areas that we can really hone in on to support our teachers and students further. So we have six more in February, and then we have six more in April, and we'll share that feedback with you. Community Health Network, I had the pleasure of attending the Black Men in White Coats event last Friday night at Community Health Hospital. This was their first annual youth summit with Lawrence Township. Next year, Warren will be a part of that. But it brought attention to the lack of diversity in the medical profession. And it was inspiring. It was disheartening, but inspiring at the same time. Only 5.6% of doctors in the medical profession are African-American males. And we can all agree that when that diversity increases, that we have improved outcomes. So that was a great event, and I can share that link with you to learn more about that. Last Wednesday, we celebrated one really special young lady for the 2022 summer graduation ceremony. Now, mind you, these students received their diplomas in the mail, but we offer them a graduation ceremony at the pack. And Mrs. Taylor, Mr. Russell, Channing Russell, and myself, we gave her the best graduation ceremony we could. So that was great. We had Senator Bro visit Pleasant Run last Friday on Veterans Day. Mr. Kummer and the staff did an amazing job of showcasing the dual-language immersion program, which you're going to hear more about tonight, and just looking at the renovations and all the great things that are going on at Pleasant Run. Julie and Rachel were able to attend that. And then I want to highlight tomorrow, the Walker Career Center showcase. Board in your packets, you have a flyer. That is tomorrow night from 6:00 to 7:30 at the Walker Career Center. So that's my report tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Hanson. At this time, we're going to start with our board comments, and we're going to start with LaShana.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see that our gallery is full in this cold weather. I will be brief, as Mr. Taylor said, brief and brilliant. Just continue to do community service work and working with MCRC. I had the pleasure of, I was at MCRC on Saturday for a meeting, but I end up kind of working with Sunny Day and the Food Pantry. And I just want to give a shout out to those ladies and the volunteers. It was so organized and they were so friendly and welcoming to our families. It was just amazing to just see the flow of things and how everything went. So I just want to give, you know, give a shout out to that department. Mr. Taylor and his crew over at MCRC, just continuing to do the works for our families. Had the pleasure of going to one of the girls' basketball games, and it had a little joke, security, my bag was too big. I didn't even know. So they screened me and screamed me about my bag. And Officer Crouch was like, no, that's Mrs. Tripple. I said, no, they're doing their job. So I'm grateful that, you know, our security, our staff is doing what they're supposed to do. And just accolades to our teachers and our Warren family. Keep going. As we say, Warren will do everything we can to make sure to support our families and our staff.
Thank you, LaShana. Rachel?
So I had the luck that I was reading to my class at Sunny Heights, and it happened to be on Halloween day. So I got to read some Lemonny Snicket short stories to them. I love Lemonny Snicket, so it was a really, really good time. I attempted to attend the Student Speech webinar, and the session went down. So then I watched it on video. As Dr. Hanson said, I was there at Pleasant Run. Senator Bro was there. She's going to be, hopefully, proposing a bill to cover textbook rental, to have the state cover textbook rental. It's about a $16 million cost for the entire state. And then connected to that, I did a background interview with NBC Universal where they got to learn all the interesting things about living in Indiana and how textbooks are paid for here. Science Olympiad had our first scrimmage. It was at Carmel. It's the event we go to every year. We were lucky enough to be joined by Hauser's junior and senior high school teams. So it's important to remember that A, Carmel's a high school team, and B, they are 10th in the nation. But I'm proud to announce that Raymond Park, our middle school team, walked away with first place in an event, and it wasn't close. This past Saturday, I was elected to join the Indiana Science Olympiad Board, and then ended up about 10 minutes later, joining their executive board as their assistant treasurer. So I'm looking forward to all the good things I can do there. Yesterday, I had a meeting with No Kids Hungry, which is a branch of Share Our Strength, and it was specifically discussing state and federal advocacy needs surrounding poverty and food access and nutrition access. They were really helpful in handling a lot of the SNAP issues that came up last year in the legislature. And so it was good. Indiana has some rather unique, again, because of our textbook and other funding, how we classify things, we have some very unique issues when it comes to SNAP nutrition and things like that. I also attended a webinar with the Center for Education Policy Research that was specifically discussing the Education Recovery Scorecard, which was put together after the NAEP results were finalized. So Indiana, however, is not in their detailed explanation yet. So I think they said that at the end of this month or maybe early next month, they'll be rolling in more states. So hopefully, we'll be there. And they have some tools for calculating how to use funds to handle education recovery post-pandemic. And then, as is obligatory in the November meeting, I have to put our plug in for Liberty Park and Turkey Day next Wednesday, a week from today, best day of the year. So if you are looking for something to volunteer and do, you can go out there and help get meals ready for a whole bunch of families and get them delivered.
Thank you so much, Rachel. Terry?
Thank you, everyone, for being here today. I want to do a shout out to Chartwell's, our food service. They always make, not always, they always step up to help out with our families. We thank you for tonight. If you guys didn't try it, it was open for you guys to have some of it today. But they really put a lot into our community, and we really are thankful for them. And I wanted to tell you, you're grateful and you're thankful. When you're not feeling the very best, and sometimes you have to remember, what makes me feel better is just thinking the little things that people do. So, nice job. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Julie?
Okay, I attended the Lowell Regrand opening, and I did, I went, I did do the Student Speech webinar as well. Visited Pleasant Run with Senator Bro. And I signed up, Rachel, for the cleanup. I figured there weren't very many people signed up there, so I thought I'll help them out. And if they get done fast enough, I'll go help deliver. So, and that's it for today.
Thank you, Julie. Howard?
Yeah, I, I didn't do anything. I would just tell you, you know, I went to a couple of football games, disappointed at one. Still love my Warren Warriors. Great guys, no question about it. I ain't do much, you know? I did a lot of activities that were outside of the Warren window, if you will, because I work on the West Side. But as far as, you know, things here in the Warren Township, I ain't do anything. Now, like I say, I was enjoying football and went to Lowell ribbon cutting and that kind of thing. And, you know, slept late, yeah. So, hey, that's it. Maybe next time.
Thank you, Howard, for being so honest. Dennis?
Good evening, everyone. I'm in Washington. Well, I'm so happy to see you again tonight, almost with the full house. But let me tell you something very important. For me, my first experience was the great experience, the election day. I'd like to say congratulations to Ms. Rachel, Ms. Terry, and Mr. Kevin. I know I lost my seat. God is his decision. And I believe I do the best that I can for the kid, for the parent, for the staff. And I feel good. I feel sad because the Spanish community, they don't have no more any representation in the board. That's the only thing what I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. I do want you to know that we are going to miss you because you have been so awesome. And I tell you, you have done an awesome job. And don't he look good? He look good like this all the time. Let's give him a hand. All right. Now, for my comment, I'm going to have to step down to the podium. Hello again, everyone. I need your participation in this. When Julie was talking about being thankful, I am so thankful for so many things. And one thing that I'm really thankful for is that my fellow board members thought enough of me to elect me as their board president. So I thank you guys so much. I've enjoyed this year. It's coming to a close. My last month is December, and we'll be electing another president. But I've had a great time being president. And I hope that I have been instrumental in helping Warren continue to be the best and the pride of the East Side. And so tonight, before I leave, you know, I want to do some more recognition in the month of December. But right now, I want to recognize our board members, and I need your participation. You know, when we go to the basketball games, I know you all are into sports. The, when the, who is the starting team come out, everybody stand to their feet and they cheer, woo! This is what I need you to do. Now, we won't be lying if you really put your feeling into it. I want the people out there to think that we're at a Pacers game. Now, if I hear people just go, huh, I'm gonna say, uh-uh, we have to do it again. And I'm gonna go over my minutes. And I'm gonna go over my minutes. So, okay, at this time, I would like for everyone to stand. This will give you a chance to stretch. And when I call, now you know what? Our school board is our starting players for this school system. And I want you to cheer for them just like you do those Pacers. So when I call them down, I want you to make them feel really, really special. When you come down, I want you to accept what I have for you and then to stay standing because we have pictures that's going to be taken. So you just sort of surround yourself. Okay, so. They ready? Our first starting player for our MSD Warren Township. And let me tell you what it says. Appreciation Award Presented to, in sincere appreciation for your outstanding service to MSD Warren Township. Thank you for everything. 2022 Gloria Williams Board President. Our first starting player is Dr. Tim Hanson. Our next starting player is Terry Amos, Vice President. Our next starting player is LaShana Tripple, our Board Secretary. Our next team player is Dennis Oriano. Our next player is Howard Darcy. Our next player is Julie French. Our next player is Rachel Wood. Come on down. Oh, we're not done yet. Now, these are the starting players, but then we have other members on our team. So we have our Administrator Secretary, which is Kim Asbury. Come on down. We have Jemaya. Oh, and Jemaya, I left your certificate up there. Jemaya, come on. Our student representative is not here. Her name is Asha Watkins. And so we're gonna have to recognize her and give her her, let's cheer her on because she might be watching. Asha, woo! And then we have Logan, that is part of our team. Come on, Logan. Look, he's looking around like, ah. Now, we're, we're gonna do a quick group photo, and then we'll be done.
Okay, your timer just went off.
I have a gentleman out here to bring three chairs, put it in front of the board for Kim, Jemaya, and Logan. They're gonna sit, they're gonna sit down, right here in front of the board. Oh, wait a minute. Guess what? I forgot myself and your board. Thank you all for, thank you all for helping cheer them on. I appreciate you. The next thing on our agenda is our, our student representative. She's not here because she has a prior engagement. They're having, what is that again?
So she is participating in the cross-country banquet banquet, along with my daughter, actually, tonight. And Asha is, she's a senior this year, and she's an absolutely amazing member of the team. So I am sure she is getting many, many accolades that she very deeply deserves.
Okay, do we have any board correspondents?
Not at this time.
Thank you, LaShana. Okay, now we're ready for our city announcements from Brendan Edwards. Is he present here tonight? There you are.
I have to say that it's really hard to match the energy of Warren Township. So generally, there's a lot of just food events going on. I'm pretty sure you've been aware of turkey giveaways and everything. But one of the things I wanted to mention is Partnership for Healthier America. That's the Good Food for All program. That's every Thursday at Capital City Church of Christ between 4:00 and 6:00. So you can be able to order a box and be able to have some things, new things to cook with potentially. Also, Red Cross has made aware of, for us on our team, the, their program. Their Sound the, Sound the Alarm Save a Life program initiative, really. So you can be able to promote more safety in your communities and neighborhoods, family, friends, to be able to make sure that everybody has working fire alarms and smoke detectors in the household and in different areas. So you can be able to, you know, be safe during the holidays, especially because you're gonna be inside, you're gonna be cooking a lot more, you're gonna be a lot more, you know, smoke in the house potentially if you have like a, you know, a fireplace and everything. So really important right this time of year, but in general, get involved with that. Also, the, I learned about the tox drop. So it's actually just right across the parking lot there. You can actually go to, every third Saturday, you can be able to drop off, you know, electronics and things like that, things that you can't normally just throw in the trash. And then we also, going into the food now, the Office of Public Health and Safety has their turkey and resources giveaway. That is tomorrow. That is at the Tabernacle Presbyterian Church between 4:00 and 7:00 p.m. And then we also have P30, if you know about them, Entrepreneur Hub on the, over here on the far east side. Make sure we're aware of their giveaway as well, but also more, such as like free haircuts and being able to talk to different people that are representing P30. So learn more about that as well. That's tomorrow as well. So that is, I think, I think it's around 6:00 o'clock, so be aware of that. Also, on Saturday, there is the Maternal Health Fair at CAFE, so Community Alliance Far East Side. That's between 9:00 and 12:00, 9:00 a.m. to, to 12:00 p.m. So there's that, too. And I also wanted to just make sure that everyone's aware of a couple of grants going on. Visit Indy, visiting all neighborhoods. I've been making sure people are aware of that. It's a way to promote your business for, you know, I think it's about at least a year and a half or two years to be able to go into, you know, a little bit more of visibility for people who may not know about your business. Really good opportunity there, about $2,000 there. And then the Indy Food Fund Grant, if you want to learn more about that, visit indyfoodpolicy.org. Also, in Indigo, they have their, you know, most recent update, which is in order to have a half fair, you need to have a My Key card. So keep an eye on that. And if you want to sign up for a newsletter or regular updates through email, then please do so. Lastly, there's Snow Now. So Indy Snow Force, you can follow them on Twitter, @IndySnowForce, but also my maps.ind.gov/IndySnowForceViewer. So that's pretty much it. Unless you have questions, the mayor is running again, as you know. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brendan. You always have some good things for us. Thank you so much.
Can I get a business card of yours, please?
Yes, I would love to have one also. Okay, we are ready for our school showcase with our Warren Online Academy, and Michelle Eaton is coming up. I understand that we're gonna start first with our Eagle Scout project. Karen Walkie, Jamie Smith, let's give them a hand.
So sorry. So I just want to take the time to acknowledge Brandon Young. He's a senior at Warren Central High School. Brandon has been part of the Scouts for the last 12 years and is working towards earning his Eagle Scout rank. In the spring of night of 2022, we met with Brandon, who was looking for a community service project to complete. Lakeside has a beautiful courtyard, but was unable to access an area of the courtyard due to not having an entry into the garden area. Brandon and I came up with a project to build two staircases right at the end, which would allow us entry into the garden. Giving his own time over his fall break, Brandon worked on this along with volunteers from his troop and completed the project. Along with building the staircases, Brandon also built benches, birdhouses for the garden. This project was enhanced, this project has enhanced Lakeside's use of the courtyard by allowing our students to use the area to read, study, observe the nature, and work on a variety of classroom and STEM projects. Brandon not only shows Warren Township's core expectations, but also is a valuable member of the community already at such a young age. He volunteers with community partners such as Sunny Day and TRI-M Music Honor Society. After Brandon graduates in May, he plans on attending college to major in theater performance.
I just would like to say that I'm grateful for the opportunity to be able to use my Eagle Scout service project to help a community that I'm a part of, help out the Warren Township Lakeside Elementary School, and give back to this community that I've grown up in and have been a part of for my whole life. So I'm just grateful to Mrs. Walkie and Mrs. Smith for giving me the opportunity to you, to carry out this project and giving me all the resources that I need for completing it. And just a big thank you.
He has more projects to come.
I'm a parent of an Eagle Scout, and I will tell you, it is a major accomplishment to go through Scouts and earn that honor. I know your name's gonna go on the trailer. My boy's there, Mason Amos. But you build so much character through Scouts, and it is all about community and giving back. What you're doing and what you're earning right now is going to be with you for life. And you may not think that Eagle Scout renders much, but when my son was in college and was looking for a summer job, he had put in his application with a forester, and the gentleman didn't need anybody, but he saw Eagle Scout and decided to give my son a chance. So for the last five years, he's still worked with that gentleman and has blossomed into a wonderful young man. But just remember, that goes a long way, and congratulations.
I just want to say that we appreciate you. You are awesome. Just continue doing what you do. And we're getting old, and you're our future. So we're looking to having some great things going on in the future, just looking at you right now. Thank you for all that you do.
And I want to say something, too. My son, too, is an Eagle Scout, and he's from your troop a few years back. But the things he learned in Boy Scouts, he loved the high adventure when you go to camp. He did the high adventure, and he is now using that in his job. He is actually working for Cirque du Soleil in their rigging area. So he's up tying knots to keep the acrobat safe. But I want to make a comment about the Eagle Scout project itself. For those who don't know, it's, it's a leadership project. It's to teach the kids how to lead a group of people. They have to, they talk with their person they're doing the, the project for and see exactly what they want, and they're in constant contact with them as they go. But they have to fill out a project form, and it's, it's pretty detailed. You know, what kind of materials are you gonna use? What do you, how do you plan on doing this? And then they go in front of a board that asks them a lot of questions and says whether or not they're ready to do it yet or not. And then if they're not, they have to go back and get answers for what that board did. And then they come back, and once they finally get approval, then they have to do fundraising projects to, to raise enough money for it. And they're, they're not supposed to be the worker bees. They're supposed to be actually planning this out. So I know when my son was going through it, Dick Coffin back here, amazing man. You really got to get to know. You really got to get to know him. He's a wonderful person. He would, you know, I, as a mom, might come up and say, hey Ricky. And he'd say, oh, Mom, go sit down. This is his project, or whatever, you know. All the, all the adults would do that. And it's, it's amazing because these kids take on, you know, every, all those kids. You know, if a kid comes to Dick and says, what should I do now? I don't know, go ask your Eagle Scout person. And so they run over to him, and it's a lot of pressure, isn't it? People coming to you saying, what do I do now? What do I do now? And you gotta figure out, and keep them all busy and make sure a project's getting done. And you have to make sure you have people in, that started, that know how to make steps, you know. So he's gotta talk to people who know how to do this kind of stuff, and he's gotta line up people to help with this. And, and it's, it's really a very cool project. It's a very cool thing that kids, when they, by the time they complete this, they really have, and if they do it the right way, they really have earned a great award. And so you should be very proud of yourself, absolutely proud of yourselves, because I am, so.
Thank you so much. That was a wonderful spotlight. Let's give them another hand. Now we are ready for our Warren Online Academy with Michelle Eaton.
I don't think our video's up there, but the content is all here, so, so this'll be fine. Good evening, Dr. Hanson, President Williams, members of the board. I am Michelle Eaton. I'm Director of Warren Online Academy, and I'm really excited to be able to present our school showcase. As you know, this year was Warren Online Academy's first official year as a K-12 school. Last year, we were introduced to the district as a grades 5 through 12 program, where students were concurrently enrolled both with us and with a traditional school in the district. And this year, as we transitioned to a new facility, we're at Highlander Park now. If the video somehow gets going, you'll see kind of a virtual tour of that space with some of our kiddos in it. We've really loved moving over there. Our model is primarily virtual. We do have hybrid pathway options for our high schoolers still. So many of our high schoolers are coming in one or two half-days a week for some in-person supports and instruction. Our kindergarten through 8th grade students almost exclusively learn online, but they too have monthly opportunities to come into the building and get some hands-on experiences with their classmates and with their teachers. These activities are centered around the curriculum, but also focused on the journey of a graduate's skills and dispositions. So we're excited to have a really great facility to be able to provide that. This year, we also unveiled a new logo and a new mascot. So we are officially the Warren Online Academy Trailblazers, which we think is exceptionally fitting for us. We are trailblazing for Warren Township, but also for the state in providing a really unique, high-quality learning experience for students. I have several guests with me tonight, as you can see, and I'm looking forward to introducing them as the presentation goes on. We're gonna be showcasing our work and our successes and a lot of our priorities for this school year. So to start us off, as part of the strategic plan focus to invest in meeting the needs of the whole child, we have been really prioritizing attendance and student engagement this year. So I'm excited to introduce Mrs. Erin Benoch, our Assistant Director, who's going to share what that looks like for Warren Online. It's never a good look when the online school has the technical issues. Oh, there it is. This was also supposed to keep us honest on time, so I think we just bought ourselves a little bit more time.
Hi, I'm Erin Benoch. I'm the Assistant Director. The Strive for Less Than Five Initiative for this school year has helped Warren Online Academy promote positive attendance behaviors for all students and provide intentional interventions to students who may struggle with attendance. Before the school year started, the Student Success Team identified those students who had struggled with attendance in the past and reached out to those students and families proactively. This allowed us to build relationships with students and families and preemptively remove any barriers to their attendance. Our teachers and counseling staff have worked diligently to reach out to students and families when absences occur. The phone calls that teachers and counselors make to our families are the frontline of support to help us better understand the needs of our students. These conversations lead to better access to the resources that the district offers to support our students and families. When students continue to struggle with attendance, our Student Success Team steps in with individualized attendance support plans. Students are assigned attendance mentors who can, who check in with students on a regular basis. Mentors help students break down barriers to attendance and provide encouragement and support as needed. We have seen a significant decrease in absences for students who actively engage with their mentors. On staff, we also have a unique position to our online school. Our online success coach, Mrs. Julie Ritchie, is part of the success, Student Success Team. Her role is to specifically work with students to ensure that they have the soft skills necessary to be successful online learners. When students are equipped with these skills, it's easier for them to engage in their learning, and ultimately, it improves their attendance. We strive for our students to know that attendance is a critical, is critical to their success as students.
Thank you, Mrs. Benoch. We know one of the school board's key priorities, obviously, is around student achievement and investing in the future of our graduates. And that work starts with our youngest learners. So for that reason, one of our key priorities for the school year has been around K-3 literacy. With me tonight, I have Mrs. Brenda Hildebrandt, who is our kindergarten through 2nd grade teacher. And she's gonna share with us what it looks like to focus on literacy with our youngest online learners.
Thank you for having us. I like to teach my classes as much like an in-person classroom. What does it look like to teach literacy online? I include the five components of a literacy block. That includes phonemic awareness, phonics, vocabulary, fluency, and comprehension. I'm attending the brain-based literacy class here in the district, and I'm applying what I'm learning for my students online. Attendance is good, and for engagement, I include movement. We all know that the little kids do not need to be on the screen all day long. So I make them get up and move, and music is a big part of our day, and art is also included in my lessons. I'm very thankful, it was, this is, was such a nice evening to hear the thankfulness, beginning the inspiration moment, and I'm very thankful for Warren Online, so thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hildebrandt. We're very lucky to have her. We actually have one of our kindergartners here, who is just a testament to how great our staff is at building relationships with students even from a distance. As soon as they walked in, came in and gave Miss Hildebrandt the biggest hug. So I've repeated last year and this year, over and over, that I'm so proud that Warren Online is able to provide an alternate pathway to success for students. And I could have all the adults here stand all night telling you how beneficial we think this is for our kids, but you probably would rather just hear it from them. So I'm going to invite Ms. Ebony Crowe, who's one of our high school teachers, to introduce some of the students from our Legends Club. She's gonna tell you a little bit about that group, and then we'd like for the students to share about their experiences at Warren Online.
Thank you, Ms. Eaton. Good evening. I'm gonna say good morning. Don't want to set you back. Good evening. I just want to say, looking at the pictures, I'm so proud of Warren Online Academy because we've accomplished, these are all this year's pictures, and we've accomplished a great deal. And I think, Ms. Eaton, Ms. Benoch, you should feel very proud, very proud. So my name is Ms. Crowe. I'm a 9 through 12 instructor, and I have the proud duty of introducing our scholars. I want to let them talk, because they talk better than me, and especially during club days. Got a lot of talkers, but that's good, because it is a student-led club. So I'm very proud of that. We've just getting started, but we've actually done some things, helping out with Morehead, and we have some other things that we'll be doing in the district. So do you guys want to start talking? All right, see, leaders, natural leaders.
So the benefits of Warren Online Academy is that when you have like something that you have to work on and you don't get it, you can just email your teacher. And at like regular schools, you can't, because you have to wait the next day. But, but teachers just email you back right away.
And just, sorry, I forgot to talk about the club. So the Legends Club is, like I said before, a student-led club, and it's offered for K through 12. So we have various ages. And it's really cool, because I have students that I taught in 8th grade that are in our Leadership Club. And it's pseudo-student council leadership, but they'll be doing a lot of volunteer activities for the district, for Indianapolis community, and doing things to promote school culture. All right, who's next? Come on up, leaders, legends.
I'm thankful for all of the teachers who helped us with our work. We were struggling with our work. And I'm also thankful for my family for getting me, getting me into Warren Online Academy School, because I was actually like having fun in the Young Legends Club. And I'm also thankful for my home, because I'm never, like, I'm not always distracted. And when I have, when I'm, like, when I have a question, my family helps me, and with my math, and science, social studies, reading, and yeah.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Lakiah Berry. I'm a senior at Warren Online Academy. I've been doing online since, online was available since about the spring of 2020. And I found that it was, it was just right for me, so I decided to stick to it to my senior year. I've been fortunate enough to be able to graduate a little early. I plan on finishing my last course in the following weeks. So that's just one of the few benefits of doing online, is I get my course load at my own pace. So whenever I finish, I, that's, that's just it. So I've been able to be on track to graduating early. When I'm, I'm also able to be a lot more flexible with my time. So it's made me like, not only am I able to focus on schoolwork and, you know, soar through that, but I'm also able to like have more time to do community work. And also just work, work. Senior, it's my senior year, so I gotta start coming up money for college applications. But yeah, so Warren Online Academy has done just a really, really good job in supporting its students through this whole journey. So I just, I thank them, and I thank Ms. Crowe. I was the student she taught in 8th grade, and then who would have thought I would be seeing her again? So I'm just grateful for all the support that the whole Warren Online Academy team has given me, yeah.
I'm thankful that I am in Warren, Warren Online Academy, because technically, it's more easier for me, honestly. I get to do my work at my own pace. Sometimes I can go ahead on my work and like be done with it straight away, by, by Monday or something. But I'm also thankful that I'm in the Legends Club with Ms. Crowe and with other people in the club. And that I, I get like a lot of time to do my work and, and I get to spend more time with my family, which is what I love, because I can like straight away do my work at my own pace. And then once I'm done, I just get to hang out with my family or hang out with my friends at the end of the day, or do what I want.
My name is Octavio Mejia Rabel. I'm a junior at Warren Online Academy. And something I find beneficial at Warren Online Academy is that it's self-paced, because I just go along with everything. And I usually get ahead of everybody and got bored in class when I was in person. So this is, being self-paced, I don't get bored, and I just, I go farther along. And it just feels good to go farther along with what I can do. Yeah, that's something I think is beneficial at Warren Online Academy. Thank you.
Can you go back to the microphone? I don't understand why you say, can you tell me that in Spanish, please? You can do it. Gracias. Thank you so much. You're good.
Thank you. Can we give another hand to the kids? This is an intimidating space. All right, so much for keeping me honest. One more, one more piece of the presentation. To wrap up, Warren Online continues to invest in families and the community. And we are thrilled that the Hernandez family has joined us tonight. They have two Trailblazers with us. Arturo is a sophomore, and Diana, who spoke with you, is a 7th grader. Their youngest is at the Early Childhood Center, correct? Hopefully a future Trailblazer. And I'd like to have them wrap us up and just share some of their experiences from a parent perspective and what it's meant for them to have a virtual option here in the district.
Man, we are so thankful to be part of Warren Township Schools. Since day one, my wife and I, we used to live on the South Side. My son is autistic, so they told us Warren has the best schools ever. We're like, let's jump over.
Yeah, we do.
And we're thankful for that. It's been, it's been the greatest decision we made. And things happen for a reason. God knows why they move us, why he moved us from one place to another, but we are thankful for that. And online academy school, it's great. It's great. We are so thankful for that. My kids are so happy, especially the oldest one, Arturo. He, he, he just gets to do his work. He's like, I'm done, I do my job. And sometimes, you know, we have to push him a little bit more, a little bit more. Come on, you have to do this, you have to do this. And the teachers, Miss Eaton, and all the staff, they're always there to help. If you have any questions, just give us a call, send us an email, whatever, and we're here for you. And that is great. It's, it's great people, great staff, and we are so, so, so happy to be part of it. And I don't know what else to say. I mean, estamos muy contentos, alegres de pertenecer a la Warren Township, porque desde el primer día que mi esposa y yo nos movimos aquí, por mi hijo, que es autista, nos dijeron, Warren tiene las mejores escuelas del distrito, de todos los distritos. Y dijimos, vamos para allá. Entonces ahora estamos muy contentos porque realmente lo es. Para nosotros, Warren es una gran academia, es una gran escuela. Tenemos el soporte de todos los maestros, de Miss Eaton, y su, sus, todo su, su staff. Y estamos muy contentos de pertenecer a esta, a esta escuela. Gracias a todos ustedes. Thank you, everybody, for being part of us and for helping us all we need.
One minute, one minute. Dr. Hanson, when I talked to you this afternoon in your office, I told you I was very sad. I'm very sad for my community. We have a great people. We have a good people, a very hard worker people. It's so proud to me to see these Spanish people in front of us. I feel sad because they don't have nobody else over here. But let me tell you something. After January, you did me. You can call me. We are in contact and I can help you 24/7. All right? I'll be with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. As you can see, we're very proud of the work we've done already this year at Warren Online Academy. We're excited for our continued success. We're grateful for you all and for Warren Township in continuing to invest in us and for helping us to blaze a new trail. So we're, we have time for any questions if you have any.
I just want to say, as a former parent of Warren Online Academy, thank you for all that you did for my Eli. He is excelling academically, math skyrocketing. So thank you for the time that you all took out to help invest, the late night calls, even when he was sick, helping extra time. So I appreciated that flexibility that you all offer. So I'm so proud of you getting your own number and just these scholars, just their faces is amazing that Warren has been able to accommodate a different learning style. And I think that's what it's all about, being able to support and accommodate our scholars in the best way that we can. So thank you.
LaShana just took the words out of my mouth. I am so proud that Warren offered different, different, different opportunities for our students with their different learning styles. And it's exciting to see these students. They feel that online academy addresses their learning style and they're so excited. And when you're excited about learning, that means you're going to do a great job. So continue the great work. I'm so proud of you. And I'm so proud that we were able to have a program that would benefit you and to address your learning style. Let's give them another hand. And before you leave, we definitely want to recognize you with a handshake. Please come on. Let's give them another hand, please, as they exit. We're just so happy. Oh, we are so happy to see our student representative come in, Asha. She is so dedicated. So at this time, you guys give me a few moments.
So worth to say.
Asha, we want you to know that the board, oh, you look so stunning. Yes, the board really appreciates you. We appreciate all your hard work and dedication that you have given to the board and to Warren Township. And we just want to encourage you to keep doing what you do. You are going to be, we're getting old, so you're taking our, our place. And you're going to be doing great things in the future. I can see it now. So continue. We want you to know that we love you and we appreciate you.
Thank you so much.
And we're going to take a little picture out here. Representing the old and the young. She would like to have a few words.
Is this the cake? I'm like, we had to tell the story. Because even everyone, I just came from my senior cross-country banquet. Mrs. Bergsberger was there. We had our award ceremony. We also had the Black and Gold Ballout, which everything started at six o'clock. So we rushed over here. Thank you, members of the board and everyone. Funny backstory on this. I missed last month's meeting because my birthday was the next day and I had already planned for events for my family. But I turned 18, which allows me to vote. And I was able to go to my first voting right here, yeah, last Tuesday. And I saw some new members. I saw President Williams there and she had her shirt on for, and Mr., yes. And, yes. And so one of the conversations we had is just, you know, getting involved young. And I'm just very grateful that I turned 18, saw 18 and able to do the adult things. And we talked about cake. And I see it, I see it here. So again, I'm very grateful and thank you. Sorry, I'm just like, just to report on our school, it's going great. We just have finished Hua two weeks. We packed the white bus and we double reached our goal, which is only 1,400 cans. And we have more, so we have tiny buses to go out now. WCTV, which is the television program and radio teamed up to go against JROTC. Sorry, I'm not even talking to you guys. We teamed up to go against JROTC and we, we passed them for the first time in 12 years at Warren Central. So big kudos to Mr. Jared in the back. We had AirPod Pros on the line. It was really great. It was really, you know, we got a lot of students involved. We had like donut parties from Loans Bakery that Mr. Jared drove to every Friday morning. Looking ahead for December, we have our annual Children's Christmas Party. And we started donations tonight at the Black and Gold Ballout where you can bring in $2 for your admission or you can bring in cookies or caprisas or just an unopened gift for the kids involved for December. So I can't wait to come back in December, talk about how great the annual Christmas party was and the opportunities that we have in December for kids as well as Warren Central. Again, thank you, members of the board. Thank you so much. Have a great night.
Happy belated birthday.
Thank you.
And she voted.
I have to say, that's a lovely scarf you have, Asha. I know.
Okay, let me get back over here. Well, do we have any business of citizens present, LaShana?
No, we do not.
Okay, so next on our agenda is our consent agenda, which consists of approval of minutes, financial report, our claim register and electronic payments, year-to-date summary of fund balances, human resources report, field trips, permission to accept gifts and grants, change orders, contracts, and use of school property. And that's it. And could we have a motion to approve those?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Terry approved and LaShana second. Is there any discussion? If not, LaShana, we're ready for a vote. Are we going to do a verbal vote? It's going to be electronic?
Yes.
And it passes. Thank you. Now, at this time, we're going to have reports, starting with Dr. Hanson.
Good evening, board. This time, want to share the most recent COVID data with you. We continue to be in the single digits, fingers crossed, as we head into the winter months. Recommend we stay status quo.
Thank you, Dr. Hanson. Now we have Kim Park with our programs report.
All right, good evening, Dr. Hanson, President Williams, members of the board. I'm here to give an update regarding our dual-language immersion and multilingual learner programs. These programs support the board goals with investing in the future of our graduates, specifically just providing our students with a variety of learning experiences that help them reach grade level achievement and just success in their academics. This also supports our strategic focus of, again, you know, investing in the future of our graduates, but also meeting the needs of the whole child. To kind of dig in first to our multilingual learner program, just as a refresher for you, that's a program that, you know, refers to students who have consistent experience with languages in addition to English. They're given a proficiency level assessment that qualifies them for our program that they get, they can receive support through that. The main goal of this program is to assist students in developing their English language proficiency as well as content knowledge at the same time. Currently, we have over 1,705 students. That number is growing. Last year around this time, we had 1,432 students. So you can just see even just within one year, we've just continued to grow. Specifically, our kindergarten population is, you know, quite high. So we're close to those 200 numbers. I always like to share our top five. So this reflects the birth countries that our students are coming from. Again, most of our students are born here in the United States, followed by Honduras, Haiti, Guatemala, and Mexico, our top languages. Again, Spanish is the majority language spoken by our students that are in our multilingual learner program, followed by Haitian Creole, French, Tagalog, and Swahili. Haitian Creole does continue to grow quite rapidly. We have probably just under 100 students in the district that speak that language. What's awesome about that student population is that they often come not just speaking Haitian Creole, but also possibly French, Spanish, as well as English. So they're actually quite multilingual when we, when we think about it. So it's great to have them a part of our school community. This gives an overview of our WEADA access assessment. This is the English proficiency assessment I mentioned earlier. This is an annual assessment. We take every year. So this just shows you from 2021 to 2022, the number of students that we tested that year and then also just the percentages that those students fell into. Our students qualify for our multilingual learner program if they're a 1.0 to a 4.9. Once they reach a 5.0 to a 6.0, they do exit our program and they're considered fluent English-speaking students. And we do monitor them, monitor their progress for two years just to ensure that they're continuing to make adequate academic progress. Now kind of shifting to our dual-language program. So it's our dual-language immersion program. This is a form of a bilingual education where we are really focusing on literacy and content in two languages. This image here shows you kind of the three pillars of dual-language, kind of the, the goals behind our program. We are wanting to create bilingual and bilinguistic students. We really strive on high-grade level achievement as well as just building social cultural competence. That's kind of being able to look outside, see the worldview. So it's a really awesome opportunity for our students. We have what's considered a two-way 50/50 program. Two-way because we have two different types of popular, or two students groups that make up our program. We have native Spanish-speaking students as well as native English-speaking students. And they also spend 50% of their day learning and content in English. And then the other 50% of their day learning content in English or Spanish. So it is great to see our students being able to do that within their school day. Currently, we have our programs at Pleasant Run and Stony Brook. We are kindergarten through sixth grade now. Hard to believe that we've already achieved, you know, gotten that far and gotten that big. This shows you the number of students that are within our program currently, which is awesome. I love seeing our numbers grow each year. Kind of connecting it to our multilingual learner program. This shows you the number of students from our multilingual learner program that are also part of our dual-language program. I love seeing that reflection because to me, this is the program that is an additive program because we are really encouraging students to continue to have their Spanish language development. And so there, we're continuing to just support that and grow that as well as adding in English if that is new for them. So I always love seeing that. Kind of to highlight, I guess, a great partnership between our dual-language and our multilingual learner program, I wanted to highlight two teachers from Pleasant Run Elementary. One is Lisa Thresh, our second-grade dual-language teacher, as well as Amy Hassel, that is our multilingual learner teacher at Pleasant Run. As I showed you, you know, we have a lot of our multilingual learner students are in this program. And so it's a great opportunity when we have our multilingual learner teacher and our classroom teachers collaborate and work together. And so the two of them worked on creating a language experience for our students. This approach has been around probably since the 1960s. So it is a research-based, you know, process that has been around for a very long time that's really built on wanting students to develop oral language to then move that into reading and writing and so forth. So what they decided to do was they created an experience for students to start. So they brought in pumpkins and they asked students to be scientists. They asked them to use their five senses, which hopefully, I don't know if they did taste. I think that they left that part out. But they cut the pumpkins open and they had the kids just explore and they talked to each other. What's great about it, though, is that they spoke in English, they spoke in Spanish. They didn't really set a precedent for what language they should use. They just wanted them to explore. As they talked, they also then started writing down words and phrases. If you notice, you'll notice that some is written in green and some is written in purple. That's because it's based on the language that they're speaking. So if they wrote in green, they were writing in Spanish. If they wrote in purple, they were writing in English. The teachers walked around, kind of supported students as needed, providing maybe certain vocabulary words or information to kind of fill in gaps. You know, a great example was none of the students could figure out how to say vine in Spanish, you know, that a pumpkin grows on a vine. And so that was kind of a dilemma. They were like, oh, what do we do? So they called other, you know, assistants from the building. Come down here, let's see if we can figure it out. So they really showed the kids that if you don't know a word, we can figure it out. We can explore and try to determine what would be best. But it was a great opportunity for kids to just really build up some of their oral language. After that experience, they moved into reading. So they read a book about the life cycle of a pumpkin. And then they put those pictures in order, again, using the oral language that they'd already developed together. After they put that life cycle together, they then started going into speaking about it. I wanted to share a short clip of one of the students sharing his life cycle of a pumpkin after they had practiced it.
We plant a seed. A little sprout comes out of that dark. Then next up that sprout, vine comes out. Then a flower comes next, then the vine. Then when the bee takes the
Pollen.
The pollen, the flower dies. Then the green pumpkin
One minute?
Yes. Then the green The green pumpkin gets the green and orange. Then stops with the, when the orange pumpkin When the orange pumpkin is...
Good job. Thank you. So what I love about that is that student, when he started in kindergarten, barely knew any words in English. And so to see the growth up to just second grade already, and again, just the power of oral language and being able to, you know, practice that language out loud. You could see him processing and thinking of what words to say. And our teachers in there filling in some of those gaps. After they did that, they moved into some listening experiences. What was great is the teachers then modeled some language structures for the students. So they modeled what the writing would look like as the students would listen. Again, you're going to see the colors distinguish there between writing it in Spanish and writing it in English. They also did some comparisons between the language because Spanish and English, there are some similarities, but there's a lot of differences as well. So they were showing those similarities and differences and having conversations so that students could make those connections. And then finally, the last step for them was to do the writing. So you can see that long process the students went through with this. What I love about the writing examples is that you see that some students wrote all in English, some students did English and Spanish, and then some maybe just wrote all in Spanish. And so again, they had that freedom of choice to use whatever language that they wanted to. And it's awesome to see, you know, some of these students maybe not being able to do that in kindergarten, but now up to second grade, just being very successful. In conclusion with that, just I had the teachers kind of reflect on that experience, and I'm going to read their responses. The first one's from Amy Hassel. She says, "When we co-teach, we each use our strengths to meet the language and content needs of all students. Using this approach, students get the best out of both teachers. As an ML teacher, I look at learning through a language lens, and the classroom teacher looks at learning through a content lens. We can both eat, we can both teach each other, and the kids are stronger students because of that. Because we are able to co-teach using English and Spanish, the students are able to see lifelong learning and vulnerability in action. This helps them to be vulnerable and take risks in the classroom. It's amazing to see their learning on a daily basis." The next is from Lisa Thresh. "By allowing the children to think, speak, listen, read, and write in both Spanish and English, we're allowing them to use their entire language repertoires. We are helping the students make cross-linguistic connections along with the language and content standards of the lessons. This allows us to see and celebrate the whole child." Again, what I, I'm glad that I could share this with you. I know that it's an, it was an awesome experience for the students, and I know they're continuing to do some more of these opportunities. But I just love being able to see how the dual-language program and the multilingual learner program can kind of come together, and you can see the benefit for all students within that. So thank you for listening, and hopefully you were able to enjoy seeing some of the opportunities that our kids are having within those two programs. Any questions for me?
I have one. What I understood, we have a two-bilingual elementary school in our district, right? They, so a student, they learn Spanish, so one in English. What happened with the student, they learn English when they go to the middle school?
So you mean if they don't continue in our program, is that what you're asking, or?
I ask you, let me see if I find the right way. The student, they speak English, that's their language, but they try to learn Spanish, right? When they finish in the elementary school and they go to the middle school, the middle school does not bilingual.
We do now. We do have the program in fifth and sixth grade at Stony Brook. So our students that are at Pleasant Run Elementary, they feed into Stony Brook. And so we do have them continue on in that program there. So, and we're slowly adding a grade level each year.
One of my nephew, they moved from Creston to Highbrook, to Stony Brook. And he don't speak, you know, very well the English. But I told him, you got somebody to help you, any teacher, or you have any class in Spanish or something, he say no. Yeah.
What grade is he in?
He's in seventh.
Okay, yeah, so we don't, we don't have the program yet in seventh grade, but we're getting there. That's hopefully our goal for next year. But I'll make sure I connect with you to make sure that we look at what the supports are for him at that school, so.
Mr. Dennis, we, they started this seven years ago with kindergartners. So the sixth graders right now are the starting seventh graders or children who moved in to that area. So each year, after they were finished with kindergarten, we added first grade, and then we added second grade. So the program's growing with that very first batch of the dual-language program that we started at kindergarten level.
So we're slowly getting there, yes. Great, any other questions?
Kim, I'm grateful for your leadership. You've helped build this from the very first day, and you should be proud of what's taking place, so great job.
Thank you, appreciate it. And it's not just me. I definitely want to give kudos to all the dual-language teachers and then the administrators as well. So it's been definitely a team effort, so thank you.
And I am so happy that we offer this in Warren because, you know, it's harder when you get older to try to learn Spanish. I've been trying to take it for two years, and, oh, I'm struggling. You make it seem so easy.
Thank you, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Now, thank you so much, and we have Marcus Clayton that is going to come to us quickly with the construction update. While we're waiting on Marcus, I would like to say, I don't know whether they might have to leave because I know we have a long agenda. But I do want to recognize one of my best friends, Edna May. Would you please stand? She is a retired administrator from IPS, and she was very instrumental and tried to help me in the educational process and a great mentor and role model. And I am so happy that she was able to come out and be with us tonight. And she's just awesome, you know? I just hate that she had to retire. Let's give her a hand. Thank you so much for coming out, Ms. May. And then my sister, she always support me. Stand up. I had both sisters here, and she decided not to go into education. They went into nursing. Her and my other sister went into the nursing field. And, but my other sister, her husband is a school bus driver for IPS. Keep standing, Betty. But I just admire my sister, and she always support me. I would like for you to give her a hand. Thank you, Betty, for coming out. And also, my daughter and my grandbaby came out, and they had to leave, and I'm just so thankful for their support. So I just wanted to say that before they disappear on me too, to recognize them for taking time out of their busy schedule to come out tonight. All right, Marcus, I turn it over to you.
All right, Team Williams is in the house, right? President Williams, Dr. Hanson, members of the Board, and our Warren community. Before I present to you, November's, and somebody wants to get a jump on this, just hold on. Before we get started, Julie says something during her moment of inspiration that definitely touched me, and that's just the whole idea of being thankful. I'm thankful for this opportunity provided by all of you. To, and my co-partner, Matt Parkinson, will say the same thing. I don't know what this job would be like without construction part of our everyday life. That's going to be really weird when that day comes to an end. But nevertheless, the opportunity to go into our schools within our community and tell stories that need to be told. And as you guys were able to see that night at Lowell, just the impact, the positive impact that it has on our students, on our staff, and people that have been affiliated with those schools for decades. So I'm very thankful for that opportunity that you guys have granted me to go on and go in there and tell those stories. And I present to you, November's Construction Update. Almost was trapped in there. How you doing, ladies? Well, did I scare you? Well, I apologize if I scared you. That wasn't my intention. Halloween has come and gone. It's November, and you know what time it is? That means it's time for another edition of Inside Warren. And I'm your host, Marcus Clayton, Chief Operations Officer here in MSD Warren Township. We have so many exciting things to cover. We're going to visit Pleasant Run Elementary. We're going to go to Lowell. And then we have some other things going on within the district. We have a regional football game coming up. And then, have you heard of 16th Street Soul? Yeah, they're really taking care of business. But before we get started, I just want to remind you that our goal is to maintain financial stability while investing in efficiencies and environment. So we're going to get this show on the road. As you can see, this is our beautiful Adidas case here at Warren Central High School. And I am so fired up, so let's go check out some of these projects.
I mean, this is a really special event. Lowell has a long history of families that just always want to come back and visit. We have multi-generation families that come back to Lowell. So we are super excited.
You went to Lowell, you blood green, right? It's always been a special place with special kids, special parents, special staff. We finally have a building that matches that special quality that's always been here.
But the character is still here, so you still feel like you see the building as it was a long time ago, like in the old hallway with the green tile on the wall.
My name is Marcus Clayton. I'm the Chief Operations Officer here in MSD Warren Township. And I want to formally welcome everyone to the Lowell Grand Reopening Night.
So we're the pride of the design we want to look like, and we want to represent it. And we want the best for our students, and for our parents, and for our community. This is a beautiful, beautiful place for them now, and so happy for all of them.
All right, we are here with the Queen of Grassie Creek Elementary, the 2021 National Blue Ribbon School, Ms. Kristi Merchant. How are you doing?
Hey, I'm doing well. Hey, thanks for being here.
Well, we want to thank you for all of your patience. We're finally to the stretch run, right? And right now, I know that, you know, our partners from Skillman and all of our contractors, they're just doing a lot of punch list-type items. I know we have some, some things that we'll have to take a look at in the gym later on. But just, just overall, we're, we're almost home. So just, how does it feel? Because I know there was a point where we didn't know if these final days would ever get here because everything we've been through.
Sure. Well, I will say, we have been very fortunate to work with Bob Spencer, our manager here on the project, and he has just really kept the teams on track. We haven't really ran into long-term delays that we were kind of expecting, especially with the supply chain and some of those snags. He's been able to maneuver and get things taken care of. So we're really very close to the expected timeline for the whole project, which feels really good now that we're near the end of it. We are really thrilled with the progress that they've made.
You're making your house, your house is pretty. Wow, what are you guys?
My name's Josiah.
Josiah, how you doing, Josiah? Okay, I'm Mr. Clayton.
My name is Jaden, it's spelled J-A-I-D-E-N.
Oh, our space stations. We have homes. We have, what's the airport? Is that the airport right there? That's for the, to brush your dog's hair?
Yes, this is the comb, this is the brush.
Oh, wow. We are just, I tell you what, these kids are truly enjoying and loving this new space here at Grassie Creek Elementary. I'm having a lot of fun here. Are you guys having fun? All right, that's what it's all about.
Feel a sense of pride, but also even more than that, you feel as if you've been acknowledged as well. Here's a school that's been remodeled, that is, that has been taken care of in a new way, updated and refreshed, and I get to go to school there. There's a sense of acknowledgement that comes with that that we were missing. And until you've gone through that, you don't realize it wasn't there.
Absolutely. My two kids are Grassie Creek alums, and one's in college, and she talks about coming back for the grand reopening because they want to see all the changes that have taken place. And we did it pretty big at Lowell, but I got a feeling that Grassie Creek's going to be potentially a little bit bigger just because of the history, the alumni, and just the overall community support. Kristi, we thank you for coming inside Warren, and we can't wait to see you at the grand opening. Because we're going to do it big.
We're excited, and we're going to roll in our National Blue Ribbon Community Celebration as well. So it's definitely going to be a big one. Nobody wants to miss that.
All right, thank you.
Absolutely.
We are here at Pleasant Run Elementary School. And first and foremost, I want to say a big Happy Veterans Day. Today is Veterans Day, and we have a lot of veterans here in Warren Township, and this is your day. And again, we just want to thank you for your service and everything that you've done to protect our country. The reason we are here today because we're going to have the opportunity to speak to our principal here, Travis Kuhler, about the construction, transitions, the evolution.
All right, good afternoon, everyone. We are back here at Pleasant Run. As you can see behind me, this is Phase Five. Phase Five includes the renovation of our library, art and music, and STEM lab, as well as our LGI space for extended learning. So I look forward to showing you those new spaces, and most importantly, for our kids to enjoy them.
All right, it's Ann Marie Fessler. How are you doing, ma'am?
I'm well, how are you?
I'm doing great. Welcome to Inside Warren. And this is our inaugural visit to the Warren Early Childhood Center. And we just hear so many great things. This is, this is where it all starts, right?
Yep.
So tell us a little bit about your building.
Oh, yeah, sure. We have children that attend here that are starting at age three all the way through age five until they become eligible for kindergarten.
That's awesome. You probably don't know this, but my two kids, they're alums of the ECC.
A long, long time ago, right?
A long, long time ago, a long, long time ago. But you guys are doing great things then, and you seem to be doing great things now. But the reason I'm here is because we have a special announcement. We will be expanding some of our construction efforts here to the ECC to really renovate this area that we're standing in right now. You want to tell us a little bit about the work that we're going to do? You're playing a big part of that in terms of the design, and really speak more to the need.
Sure. Well, one of our goals and priorities, for sure, is to keep our children, first and foremost, safe while they're at school. And so right now, we do have a locked entrance that we monitor. But we feel with everything unfortunately happening in schools around us, we just need to amp up that effort a little bit. So we're hoping with a new entrance, we're going to be able to provide a double-lock entryway and monitor who's coming and going a little bit more efficiently to try to keep our staff and our children safe.
This new vestibule, this new safe, secure entrance will be coming your way starting in the summer of 2023. And just based on some of the feedback we received from our partners with Fannie and Howie and the contracts we work with, it feels like they'll be able to complete this project relatively, let's just say, fast compared to other projects?
Correct, yes. We're hoping that we can get it done pretty quickly with this little interruption to our operation as possible. We're hoping that we can get it done pretty quickly with this little interruption to our operation as possible.
Well, you heard it here first, here at the Warren Early Childhood Center, our mighty leader, Ms. Anne Marie Fessler. Thanks for having us.
Oh, thanks for coming to visit.
Thanks for coming inside Warren.
Yeah, come back and play next time.
All right.
Thank you.
Welcome to Sunny Heights Elementary, the home of the Eagles. And once again, this is an Inside Warren exclusive as we bring you here to Sunny Heights for the first time for a special announcement. Thanks to our school board, as well as our great Superintendent Dr. Hanson, they have paved the way for us to once again put safety first. And here in a few months, we're going to break ground and begin a brand new construction project here on the campus of Sunny Heights, specifically here at the entrance. And again, with the idea of creating another safe entrance, a safe vestibule, and making sure that we keep our students safe. So let's learn a little bit more about that. Let's go. Now it's time to hear from our fearless leader here at the Sunny Heights Elementary, the home of the Eagles, Mr. Bart Lewis. Bart, how are you doing, sir?
I'm good, Mr. Clayton. How are you?
I'm excited. We have a special project and we just revealed that to our, our viewers. That's going to take place and break ground this spring. And you know, we always put safety first.
Yes, I'm a, I'm, I'm excited, very excited. I know it's a process. I know there's, there's a lot goes to it and we're ready for that. Anytime we can make an enhancement to our building that, that's going to make it more welcoming and more beautiful is, is great. However, the need for this comes from enhancing and making sure that we can be as safe and secure of a building as possible. I've got, you know, over 500 bodies in here that I want to keep as safe as possible. And I think this construction is going to be a huge step for us to just take an already safe building and a, a place that's built for learning and make it just even, even better. And so we're super excited. The planning part of it is, is, you know, new for me and I'm learning a lot. But again, I think overall, our staff is really excited about the idea. And I think once parents get an idea, families get an idea of what is going to be added on, I think that excitement is going to grow even more. So I'm just, just really ready to get going and, and get to it.
So Bart, we'll, we'll check in with you regularly throughout this process. And this is your first time on Inside Warren and thank you for joining us.
All right, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any questions? Thank you.
I do have to say, Rachel, I had the same, the same response when I was home watching this ahead of time. I thought, right.
Well, Grassy Creek has a lot of loyal supporters. Want to be the oldest.
It's going to be hard to top Lowell, but we, we have to just, we have, every time we have to crank it up, the expectation. So yeah, we'll see.
Much Marcus. I always look forward to your videos. They are so amusing. Thank you so much. Now at this time, we have Quill, Red Vine, Red Wine with Chartwells. And let's give them a hand for that delicious food that they provided today. Yes.
Good evening, Dr. Hanson, President of the Board and Board Members, as well as my Chartwells group. Glad y'all came out tonight. All right, Jason and I, Jason, this is, or boy, this is my boss, Jason Marshall. And we're not going to plan on being before you too, too long. And we don't have videos, but we will have a quick presentation for you all. So as you all know, Chartwells is here to promote child nutrition. And we are here to ensure that the students feel affirmed, validated and nurtured. And we want to focus on the, the validation and nurture because everything that we do hopes to promote them in their day. And food is a big part of that. And our program is strategic focuses area is investing in the needs of the whole child. We're not going to go in a lot of details for all 10 of these objectives, but these are the 22, 23 strategic objectives that we have here for Chartwells as a part of Warren Township. And so we're going to highlight a few things. The first one is for staffing and temp staffing. Our goal is to reduce the number of temps that we have to zero. We do, we've done that so far by, I should say, we started that pathway. We've increased our hourly team to more than 32% versus last year. So our reduction or reliance on temps is a huge goal, as you all can see, because it does have a financial impact for us as a township. We also focus on safety. Safety impacts our environment because of the fact that if we don't have a safe environment, it affects the culture of our building. And no one wants to come to a building where you're unsafe. And so the children and everybody in the building will be impacted if we have a much more safer environment. Strong financial performance year to date, as you can see, we have an unfavorable 133% growth in, through period four. That's intentional due to the amount of spend down that we have to do per the DOE. However, if we were to look at the normalization of returns, we would actually be at $76,000 to the good, which is $1,000 better at the same time last year. Leadership and growth potential. We are very proud to say that we have had a strong culture of promoting. In fact, our regional dietitian, Haley Quadi, has come from us here at Warren Township. And we have a very excited, up and coming dietitian, Shannon Jones, who's also in our audience. So we're glad to have her on board. But we also promoted one of our hourly kitchen managers to our salary team, who is Diana Miller. And she's also here today to Assistant Director. So promotion is a huge thing because if the team has a pathway for growth, then that also helps us as far as retention is concerned as well, when we're trying to recruit and develop our team. Student engagement. So what you all have in front of you, we'll get into a little bit as well, or you all tried, were some of the samples that came as a result of our student engagement. Now, the first, first thing that we have up here is our student surveys. In August, we sent out student surveys to all of our high school students. And we had 1,400, more than 1,400 responses out of the 3,000 students, or 3,200 students that we have at our high school. Some of the feedback that we have from them, and I'll go through these. What they would like to see is 55% of that 1,400 said they'd like to see better food presentation. 55% said that the lines need to move quicker. 22% said that they would like ramen. Yeah, ramen. 11% of them said they would like to see breakfast for lunch. 74% of them, this was a great stat, 74% of the students said that the staff was very friendly. So that's a result of the student surveys that were sent out, some of the results. And then we got more details and, and that's been shared with you all. If not, we can get that information to you all. The next program that we have, like I said, was the student choice. Student choice is where the students get a chance to choose what the next line item, or the next serving line area would be. You all have the chef will have to help me with this. Beemee bop, did I say it correctly? Okay. Rice bowl, which one at the high school. And then you also have the mac and cheeseology. So you all have mac and cheese with pulled pork on top of it, that one in the middle schools. Hopefully that was very delicious. You all liked it, I hope. And then this year, we also have, or we're going to do something different, but it came as a result of student choice across the nation, which is our veg out. You all have three choices of vegetarian options and we'll go through that in a little bit more. But that came from, as a result of, of the student choice from across the nation, but it's a veg out program that we're trying here at Warren. And then last thing on, for student engagement is our student focus groups. We're going to continue to have a more expansive student focus group. But this first quarter, we had four elementary classes, two at Brookview and then two at Lowell Elementary, two middle schools, and then two groups at the high school participate in focus groups. So we asked them certain questions about the environment, breakfast, how they feel like it's going, what can we change in the schools as far as if they had a magic wand, what would they change? What do they like about lunch? What they dislike about lunch? We got some very good feedback and we got some very strong feedback that we need to grow on. I'll put it like that. But we're going to compile all that information and we will release those results once we finish compiling it. I will say that, like I said earlier, our goal is to have these more on a quarterly basis because the feedback that we got from them was very, very much appreciated. Also, so Amy LaFrank is one of our regional person, as you all see in the picture. She's one that came in from St. Louis. She's from Missouri. She came in from St. Louis to help us and put together the questions that we ask. So it's not just us led here that are doing it. We're reaching out and getting outside resources to assist us in developing the programs and feedback so that we're not having a bias because we, we love Warren and we want to skew things to our favor. But when they have outside feedback and outside insight, that can truly help us critique and whether or not we're doing a good job.
Awesome, thank you Quill. And good evening, President Williams, Dr. Hanson and Board, Community. This, this next slide here is something that we are very, very passionate about as well. It's one of our 10 objectives for this school year. And that is expanding the opportunity to partner with minority vendors. I wanted to highlight a few things with this for us tonight. First of all, you see featured on the left side, Klosterman Banking Company. Klosterman is actually a female owned and operated minority vendor. And it's one that we use on a consistent basis. Currently, for the 21, 22 school year in the rears, we actually captured $67,000 in last school year in minority spend through Klosterman. This year, current school year to date, we've actually spent $27,000 year to date. And we are actually for this school year on trend to exceed $90,000 in spend with Klosterman. But I'll tell you this, this initiative is so important that we are continuing to explore other opportunities with minority spend. We're not just resting on our partnership with Klosterman. We've actually already started the process of exploration with a couple other minority vendors within the greater region. Quill and I have been on a series, along with our supply chain and purchasing groups, to have those initial conversations with these minority owned companies. And we are going through the process and very exciting to continue to see this initiative grow and progress. We are projecting to exceed well over $100,000 with these additional partnerships in the 23, 24 school year. And again, we don't want just one or two minority vendors that we are strategic partners with here at Warren. We want to have many. And so that's where we're headed. I want to cast that vision for everyone on where we are headed. Because that's something that we value. That's something that is aligned with our values here at Warren. And that's something that we need to do more and more of. I wanted to talk about the process because the process is rather extensive in terms of exploring and adding any type of vendor. Thankfully, the minority vendor addition process is not as extensive as adding a regular vendor. They've made a quicker pathway through our supply chain. But once we do identify a potential minority vendor within the region, then we have to verify, is their product or their service applicable or relevant? How, how is it relevant to serving our students each day? Is it compliant with and does it meet the, the IDOE nutritional regulations and standards? Is it a product that our student will want and like and benefit from? Do they have proper insurance, liability coverage and, and protocols to keep our students and our district safe? Does it taste good? Is it a good product? And we're actually in process after our initial meetings of exploration of one of our minority vendors actually sending us samples. I'm excited to taste some of the fresh baked breads, by the way, that they're sending. But they actually are sending multiple different samples of different products that are all smart snack and IDOE compliant. And then once that happens, our third-party supply chain actually tours their facility and monitors for cleanliness and safety measures again, to make sure that where the actual products are produced is keeping our students safe and looking after their wellbeing. Then we establish and finalize pricing pars and the delivery process. And then after we go through all of those steps, then we get to begin our journey with our new minority vendor partners and place our first orders. So very excited about this journey that we're on here with increasing and, and going further with minority, minority vendor partnerships and spend. And I look forward to seeing the 90-plus thousand dollar projected for this school year grow in leaps and bounds in the months and years to come.
Oh, y'all give him a round of applause. He gets the easy part, right? No, I'm joking. Next thing, participation rate. We know that this is a big measurement for us here at Warren Township is are the students eating? And I'm glad to say that this year, we've had a steady month-to-month increase for our student participation rate. Right now, we finished October with the high school participation rate at lunch being above 60%. So that's a huge increase for, or a great number for high school students. For middle schools, every single one of our middle schools participation rate right now at the end of October was over 80%, which is phenomenal for a middle school lunch participation rate, with Raymond Park approaching their 90% participation rate. So what has driven that is a few things. So the student choice, the more favorable options, and some of you all have been, or you all have the choice, the chance to taste some of those options. Plus, the students speak every single year and we're actually executing a lot of the things that they're talking about. So because they, they let us know what they like and dislike, we know they tell us what they dislike, we can approve upon it and we present options that they do enjoy. Next thing that we have is our catering execution. We know that COVID came around and shut down a lot of things for us and we had to go to a lot of prepackaged products. So now we're out of COVID. You all were able to sample some things that we prepared fresh for you all. And we don't have to worry about the prepackaging. The students are also serving things by themselves when they go to different options or functions. So, and then you all with your caterings as well have been able to have things where it's baked fresh. We don't have to worry about so much supply chain issues as we did before, which is also impacted the, the quality of the service that we do have. So we're going back to pre-COVID standard of excellence that we at Warren like to have. And hopefully you all like the display that you all saw outside as well.
I think our time is nearing. I'll be very brief, President Williams, I promise. And I, real quickly, I, I know this, this next couple of slides are another priority initiative for us here at Warren. You know, we have within the Chartwells network, a very large group of regional resources. We have a regional executive chef and team. We have a regional dietitian and team. We have a regional marketing director. That was Amy LaFrank that came on site for an entire week to conduct the, the focus groups. Thank you, Quill. The focus groups with our students. And an initiative that we have, Quill and I and the team, is to continue to have deeper and further levels of utilization to progress the different aspects of what we do each day in serving our students and the township through having those regional resources really be impactful. And what does that mean? How does that connect back to the students? Well, the pictures that are on the slides up there, that is actually a culinary training day that our regional executive chef just recently conducted a few short weeks ago with 22 of our cooks and our leaders here at Warren. We believe that when we utilize those regional resources, have them come on site and invest and pour into our people here at Warren, that is going to increase the level of execution of our team and our people and thus provide a higher caliber experience for our students and our teachers and, and everyone that, that does have a meal on a daily basis. And so that day there is actually a full-blown day of training really to talk about and to teach and to, to continue to increase the culinary skills of our team and our people. And I know Quill has some additional things as well to talk about with our regional dietitian and, and some other areas where our regional resources do and will continue to be more and more engaged here at Warren Township. So Quill, let you talk about that.
So as Jason mentioned, Haley Quadi, our regional dietitian, y'all like saying that now, our regional dietitian. That's, you all should be very proud of that here at Warren. She's our regional dietitian. She has promoted our wellness program. In fact, our wellness policy, she had a huge part in developing the wellness policy that we had to implement because we're required by the DOE to update that every three years. So out of that before, or out of that wellness policy, some of the things that she has to do, which
do, which is programs to drive nutrition wellness amongst the children, on the right-hand side, as well as adults, on the right-hand side of some of the gifts that she, or prizes that she was giving away last year, and I think they're going to continue giving some of those away this year. And then, on the left-hand side, you see the kids being active, which, I don't know if some of us can do that today, but the kids are being active, doing hip movements, right? So she develops programs and initiatives and games to get the kids up and moving. And she, the grants that she wrote helped pay for the products, so it's not coming out of Warren's budget. And the last part is the part that we're really, really, really excited about, program innovations. For the last five or six weeks, we've been at Brookview Elementary School, and we've participated or done a program called Mood Boost. Mood Boost is a program that's designed to teach kids what foods help them be in a better mindset. So to be happy, to be excited, to be energetic. There's different foods that promote different mindsets and moods that you can have. So they've been doing that for the past five weeks at Brookview Middle School. The smoothie pilot program, you all have the mixed berry smoothie that was sampled for you guys. You love it, right? So pretty good, right? That's been a very popular item, and in fact, at the end of November, we're going to be able to gather all of our numbers to see how well it has actually helped and enhanced the participation rate at Lakeside Elementary School. And then, we also had it in all the middle schools, and then we shifted from Lakeside Elementary School to the high school. And then, we also have our teaching kitchens, where chef will take a actual mobile teaching unit to a school and do a demonstration so that kids can participate in seeing how the food is prepared, what it tastes like, and it's all fresh right there. And then, this program here, actually, before I go on, that picture on the top left, that picture is a picture that's been circled nationwide. That's at Lakeside Elementary. Those kids were excited to have the smoothies because they were one of the first kids in the country to have the smoothie program. And then, you see Shannon and Dan, that's our dietitian and our marketing specialist that helped promote the Mood Boost program, which is what they're doing over at Brookview Elementary School. This is what we're really excited about. So this will be replacing student choice as of now because this is a month-long program that chef Chris and chef DeMarcus went to Minnesota to get training on. They actually, chef DeMarcus just beat the blizzard from Minnesota, and he was able to get in late Sunday night, Friday night, I think it was, and he was not happy when he woke up Saturday morning. So this program focuses on food, fun, and education. The goal of this program is to teach kids to enjoy, or show them how to enjoy and participate in the different flavors of different cultures. It's a four-week program, so each of these weeks, they will enjoy, one week is Asian, another one is Italian, another one is Mexican, I can't remember what the fourth one is. But there's different foods for the entire week, where we will change their entire line at the middle schools and the high schools for them to enjoy that cultural product. Not only do they enjoy the foods, but we also give away swag, which kids love swag. And then, we also teach them about the cultural experiences, so there'll be some informational data about that particular country. So not only do we focus on food in what we do, we focus on educating them about how, what foods they can enjoy to make them happier and have better moods throughout the day, and also about cultural experiences that they may not get in other programs. So the last part we have is, when you all get the financial data, these are some things that you all may need to know as far as understanding some of the numbers. So trends, participation, and profitability. The middle schools' participation have gone up in breakfast, if you all have seen on your slides or in your presentation, because of the fact that we've had more hot days for breakfast. So instead of going twice a week, we've increased it to three days a week for middle schools and even the high schools for breakfast. Elementary snack participation, when this was produced, we had 90% of our classrooms participating in snack. Now, we have 100% of our classrooms all participating in snack, so that's going to help drive the number of meals that we're serving. Compliance has increased, so compliance is a big thing. If we do not serve a meal according to the DOE's expectations, we cannot claim that meal. Now, our team has taken over the breakfast, and by us, our team taking over the breakfast, a process to make sure that the paperwork is done correct, we can claim 100% of the meals that we give out. People, hourly rates have increased. When I came in, Marcus and I sat down and we had a meeting. Our goal was to get our hourly pay rate to $15. Thankfully, we've negotiated because we do have a union contract. We've negotiated that we've been able to get that up to $15 an hour within the next two or three years compared to next seven or eight years. We know that with the increased costs, we're glad to say that we've also received increased reimbursements, or at least the township is getting an increased amount of reimbursements as well. So as you can see, in 2017, lunch was only $3.39 for the reimbursement rate. Now, it's at $4.58. So not only has the DOE recognized that costs have gone up, they've also realized that they need to compensate the township for the number of meals that they're serving as well. And then, the variable costs, so things that we can control, such as uniforms, supplies, general liability insurance by not having safety incidents, recruiting expenses, marketing, equipment repair, and equipment, these are things that we monitor very, very closely so that we can make sure that we drive the bottom line and not being negligent in taking care of the resources that Warren has entrusted to Chartwells.
And the last and final thing here is something we don't, we don't talk about a lot, but it's something that we wanted to report on and highlight for our presentation tonight, and that is, that's the food rebates portion. So we're happy to report that because of our internal supply chain, known as FoodBuy on the Chartwell side, we've actually established and have for quite, quite many years now, regional and national relationships that allow us to receive back a very large number of food rebates or vendor allowances, as we call them. And we're able to give back 100% of those food rebates to the township. And so just to give some quick numbers on what that looks like, for the month of October, we actually were able to give back 100% of the rebates to the tune of $142,000 just for the month of October. Year-to-date, in rebates, food rebates, we Chartwells have been able to give back to the district $371,000 year-to-date. Last year, we were able to give back in vendor rebates $947,000 for the school year in vendor rebates. And this year, we're anticipating exceeding giving back in food rebates close to $1 million to the district. So I don't know if anybody knows about that or not, but I wanted to highlight that tonight and just let everyone know that, you know, that's something that we are happy to be able to do. We love to be able to do that, and we know that it benefits the district and allows the district then to be able to take and reinvest that into our students. And so it's a really cool thing. And lastly, just in the spirit of the theme tonight, I don't want to miss an opportunity, and I know I speak on behalf of Quill, myself, the entire team, Paul Kendall also, who is my regional leader, to say, we're very thankful to be able to serve the district. Thank you all for the opportunity to be able to do that. We're very thankful for this partnership and the opportunity that we have to be able to help address and to take care of the full child, the full student, and to make sure that they're taken care of each and every day. And so I just want to say thank you all for the opportunity tonight. We're thankful for that.
24 minutes in, sorry about that. Do y'all have any questions that we can help you out with?
Let me, I just wanted to say, that was a super presentation. You know, whatever happened to the instant mashed potatoes in Salisbury steak? I mean, what are you guys trying to do here? You know, what's really interesting is that you've gotten kids who don't like to eat vegetables having veggie outs. I mean, come on. What are you, superhuman standing stuff there? What I'd like you really do, and I'm going to go all seriously, if you could go ahead and introduce your staff again, because when you called the names out, none of the folks stood up, and so I would like you to go ahead and do it again so that they can be properly recognized.
Yes, certainly. So on our K-12 side, we have two directors. Jennifer Galbreth oversees our middle schools and high school and catering and concessions. Behind her is her assistant, you gonna stand up, Karen Bishop. Next to her is our dietitian, Shannon Jones. And then, we have our marketing specialist, Dan Hahn. Chef Chris Henderson is one of the chefs that prepared, this is our executive chef here. And then, behind him, we have Sue Kribick, our office manager. Next, we have the assistant director who was promoted from the high school, Diana Miller. And then, we have our K-4 director, Inez Stevens. All right, so as you can see, we have a very diverse team too, so we're very proud of that here at Warren Township as well.
I just wanted to say, I'm gonna be totally honest with you. When Chartwell first came, oh, I was so disappointed. I was like, oh, no, we gonna have to do something, something better. And you know what? I am so happy to see the growth. You guys have just grown so much, and I like the enthusiasm. I love the way that you're setting goals and you're trying to see what the likes and dislikes of the students are. So I am so happy that I stuck in there with you guys.
So are we.
And now, I tell you, I enjoy your food, but I had to be honest, you know, I had some doubts at first, but hey, you made a believer out of me, so thank you so much.
Since our theme is thankful, thank you for every Wednesday before Thanksgiving, your chefs, your, everybody comes together and makes a beautiful dinner for families. And thank you guys for doing that.
Oh, we're glad to do it.
It's a pleasure to work beside you guys.
We have about another 20 people helping out this year, too.
Best day of the year.
Anything else? Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any yellow cards of citizens present? LaShawna?
No, we do not.
Okay, great. Well, I would like to inform everyone, we are almost to the end. Just bear with us about another 15 minutes, maybe less than that, and we'll be done, depending on the last speakers here. We're gonna start with Dr. Hanson with our mission of the corporation.
Good evening again, board. Last month, I brought to you Policy 2105. These are not new content. It's just revising policies that have been in place. So I ask for your approval of Policy 2105, which is the mission of our corporation.
I would like to make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion. And Julie, second. Is there any discussion? If not, we're ready for a vote. And it passes.
Thank you. And in similar fashion, I ask for your approval for Policy 2110, which is an update of our vision.
So moved.
Julie, Julie moved. LaShawna, second. Is there any discussion? If not, we're ready for a vote. And we'd like to inform everyone, we're doing it electronically. That's why it takes a few minutes. And it passes. Thank you. Now, we're ready for our Brian Simpkins to discuss support staff.
President Williams, Dr. Hanson, members of the board. Traditionally, in Warren Township, once we get through collective bargaining and we develop the teacher agreement and it's ratified and approved by the board, we continue to invest in our people and mercifully, thankfully, I have before you this evening, for your consideration, compensation increases for support staff as well as for administrators. But first, for support staff. Bring it up here. For your consideration, I have a proposed 2.6% raise across the board for all hourly and salary classified staff. In addition, thankfully, with our referendum money, we're also able to provide a one-time employer health savings account contribution, or for those who don't have a health savings account or insurance, equivalent amount, less taxes for a one-time stipend. So either the stipend or the one-time HSA contribution will be made on the second pay in January in 2023. I should say, too, that the raise is also retroactive to July 1. Also, maintaining tradition, we will, in December, recognize our loyal support staff with 20-plus years of continued full-time service, and so we will continue to have the $350 loyalty bonus for those employees as well, and they will receive that on December 30th's pay.
I'd like to make the motion.
A second.
Should I go further with the other piece?
He wasn't quite finished. Okay.
That's okay. You're excited. I am, too. And then, also for your consideration, for administrators, a proposed compensation increase of flat $2,500, flat dollar amount raise to the base salary for administrators. That raise is tied to the average Warren teacher raise. That's what we traditionally have, that's what we did last year, and that's what this is tied to. So it's commensurate with the average Warren teacher raise this year. So that is also retroactive to July 1. And in similar fashion to, similar to what is in the bargaining agreement for teachers, we are fortunate, again, that additional funds have afforded us the opportunity to provide for our administrators a one-time employer contribution to the health savings accounts or an equivalent stipend. For those administrators, $500 for those who zero to three years of experience, and $2,800 to those with four or more years of experience. Any questions?
I'd like to make the motion.
A second.
All right, I was gonna ask for any discussion. I just wanted to ask, that was a big jump from three years to four years, from 800 to 2,000. What was the?
For the administrators?
Yes.
Yeah. Like I said, we modeled this off of what the teachers have, and so it really is kind of a loyalty recognition for those loyal administrators who have been with us for four or more years. Similar to the teachers, it was also very much recognizing the loyal service of teachers with four or more years of experience. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, we're ready for, has been motion already? And second? Okay, so that was the discussion. Is there any other discussion? If not, we're ready for a vote. And it passes. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Now, we're ready for Matt Parkinson.
Good evening again, board members. We have for your consideration this evening, the request that the board approve our participation in the Indiana Bond Bank's Tax Anticipation Warrant Program. This is a program the school district has been participating in for at least the last 15 years. Essentially, this is a cash flow tool. So as property taxpayers, we pay our property taxes each May and November. As a school district, as a receiver of property taxes, we receive the large majority of our property taxes in June and December. The operations fund is largely funded by property taxes, and so we use tax anticipation warrants to receive cash upfront in January to help us with cash flow. Essentially, gets us through to the period where we collect our property taxes in June, at which point, we pay back a portion of the warrants, and then, we use the remaining warrant dollars to get us through between July and December until we receive again our December property tax distribution. The Indiana Bond Bank program is a consortium model where we partner with other school districts and other types of local governments. We pool our resources together and issue these bonds as a single entity. We would receive the money in January and, again, pay it back in June and December. So, board members, I'd request your approval to participate in the Tax Anticipation Warrant Program again, and if there are any questions I can answer for you about it, I'd be happy to do so.
So moved.
Julie, motion?
I'll second it.
Rachel, second. Is there any discussion? If not, we're ready for a vote. And it passes. Thank you. Okay, the last person on our agenda. Okay, the last person on our agenda is Ryan Russell.
Good evening, President Williams, Dr. Hanson, members of the board. Tonight, for discussion, I bring to you the 2324 and 2425 student calendar. I am asking formally that we reopen the 2324 calendar. We do already have an approved 2324 calendar, and I'll share why for that in just one moment. Specifically, we get, go through a process every year this time to meet with teachers, members of the community, parents. We get feedback. You may have noticed in some of the communications, we have a survey link out right now just asking for some specific feedback. Overwhelmingly, there's been a few pieces that have come to our attention that require, or I believe require us to open our 2324 calendar and then model that in years to come. Specifically, the biggest piece of that has been the desire to have parent-teacher conferences before fall break. Excuse me. Over the past few years, we have had parent-teacher conferences on the Thursday after we return from fall break. The rationale behind that previously has been is that we wanted to make sure that we got a full quarter of the school year in before parent-teacher conferences so report cards were available. The proposed change in the calendar is that we would actually move fall break back one week. So instead of what is currently approved in the calendar for the 2324 school year is for fall break to formally begin on Monday, October 2. This calendar reflects fall break starting on Monday, October 9. We would like to move parent-teacher conferences into a, a two-day scenario similar to how we've done years in the past, where in this scenario that's replicated on this calendar, we would have parent-teacher conferences the evening or the afternoon and evening after school on Thursday, October 5, and then have parent-teacher conferences, no students, on Friday, October 6, but allocate that morning time for parent-teacher conferences as well. This has been specific feedback, again, that we've received from teachers. We've received from parents and community members just about the desire to have that conference in. It still allows us to have sufficient time in the first quarter to be able to have a 45-day quarter, to be able to get report cards in, and then issue report cards right before fall break rather than after at this time. That calendar is replicated in the 2425, or I should say not the calendar. That theory is replicated in 2425 as well for that. The other significant difference that only applies to 2425, and we want to get this out there ahead of time, as in two years ahead of time. If you'll look, other than what I just mentioned, it's a pretty carbon copy of the calendar before, with the exception, if you look at July 25 as the first day of school, it's listed as the first day of school for students in grades kindergarten through ninth. So the first day of school would only have our freshmen at Warren Central High School on that very first day. We believe that provides the best orientation opportunity for our freshmen to have a guaranteed experience that's not contingent upon some type of summer participation or anything else with, with that. To, to ensure that we have 180 days of school for grades 10, 11, and 12, we would actually utilize a provision in a planned e-learning day status and have a planned e-learning day for students in grades 10, 11, and 12 on President's Day, February 17, as a day that traditionally all other students in the district wouldn't go to school. No one would be going to in-person school, but that would be a e-learning day, a, a way for students to make that up. Happy to answer any questions. We bring these back in December with more feedback and seeking approval.
Ryan, could you add why we can do four essentially e-learning days for 10, 11, 12 kids?
Yeah, so Indiana code requires us now to, if we have, well, technically, we can have unlimited e-learning days, but any more than three e-learning days requires e-learning days to be at least 50% synchronous instruction. That provision only applies if 50% or more of your district is engaged in that. Just having 10th, 11th, and 12th out is less than 50% of our district, so it actually allows us that opportunity. The other thing that'll remind you is we don't have the dates for PSAT and SAT yet for these calendars, but we will still continue to employ the idea of, on the SAT day that all juniors will take, that we would be employing planned e-learning days for those students in, in other grade levels as well under a similar philosophy that it's only if it really applies to 50% or more of the district.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I know that was a long evening, but I'm just so thankful for all of our presentations, and we're gonna be very brief and give you our last board comments, starting with Julie.
Have a great evening. Happy Thanksgiving. Have safe travels if you're going out of town. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Now Howard? Thank you, Howard. Dennis?
Howard, good evening, and I hope to see you my last, next meeting. Come in, please. I'd like to see you for the last time sitting over here in front of you. Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you so much, Dennis. LaShana?
Two really quick announcements I forgot to say. For Thanksgiving on November the 23rd, I know we have the Turkey Day, but at MRC, after they, after you guys give them a hot meal, they can also come pick up a food box for Thanksgiving to last them, you know, over the weekend. And then the holiday assistance has been sent out to the schools. I just told Dr. Hanson, we have like over 600 families already signed up. That big day is December the 17th, and we'll be at Warren Central. Any volunteers are welcome. I just wanted to throw that out there. So thank you, and I guess go home, eat, time to go to bed. We'll see you tomorrow.
Thank you so much, LaShana. Rachel?
I just wanted to thank Gloria for the lovely presentation earlier. That was really quite kind. And that I missed the dress code memo. I always try to support schools.
I am so sorry.
Today, but thank you so much. It was quite lovely.
Oh, you're welcome. Terry?
Thank you, Gloria. It's the little things that matter that sometimes seem so little that you don't think they do. But just your presence with family, knowing that there's been COVID the last few years and hopefully more families can get together. Just enjoy the time with your family and just appreciate the little things that they do for you each day.
Thank you. And I would just like to say again, thank everyone for coming, and I especially thank my family and friends again. And I would like to let you guys know, see, I'm not ashamed to talk about how old I am because I am thankful that the Lord has allowed me to continue to get old. You know, if I don't continue to get old, I'll be gone, and I'm not ready to go yet. You know, so I am thankful that I have a birthday coming up on the 29th, and I will, unfortunately, I'll be leaving my 60s. I'll be turning the big 7-0. So don't you all call me old now. I'm not old. You know, you're just as old as you feel. So on the 29th, I'll be happy to celebrate my 70th birthday. So, oh, yeah, that's right. And hers is Friday.
Monday the 21st, Tuesday.
Woo, all this, you know, some great people up here in November birthdays. And to celebrate my birthday, my daughter and son is sponsoring a trip to take me to Hawaii along with my sisters, my grandbaby. So we're planning on having a good time next week. Yes, yes, we're gonna do it over Thanksgiving break because everybody has to be back to work. Everything, and it's supposed to be 85 degrees there, too, you guys. I won't make you all just dream about that hot weather. Yes, have a nice evening. Our meeting is adjourned.